Hello, everybody. Pursuant to the Open Public Means Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting, as noticed, was sent to the Adv. Press on August 29, 2022, and has been duly advertised in the Adv. Press issue on September 1, 2022. All municipal clerks of the townships and the boroughs within the Freehold Regional High School District have been duly notified, and the requirements of this posting have been met on August 29, 2022. Please rise and join me in the prayer. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 9 meeting?
Motion.
Second.
And Mr. Parisi. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Local, please.
Mrs. Bruno. Mrs. Caffey-Hello. Mrs. Pennelli. Mrs. Higley. Mrs. Lavin. You can prove it if it reflects your absence, then we're not affected. So, yes? Ms. McCaff. Mr. Messinger. Here, Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes. Communications are on file in the Board's office, the Board Secretary's office. Dr. Sampson, are you ready for your report?
I'm ready, Mr. Bruno. So, good evening, everyone. With the microphone, I always feel like Pat Sajak or something up here. So, a couple really important things to discuss, and obviously, if anyone who's been following what's happening in the school district, and some of the messaging I've sent out over, literally, five years at this point in time, but certainly with increasing frequency over the past couple months related to school funding in New Jersey and S2, and I'm going to dovetail into that in a little while. But I wanted to open tonight because we are putting the finali-- finishing touches on and finalizing the district's next strategic plan. And I think in the midst of all of the budget uncertainty that we've dealt with from Trenton, and in our case, that's $21 million thus far in reductions, supposedly upwards of $28 million, the work goes on, and making sure that we have a district that meets the needs of our students, regardless of what happens with that budget circumstance, and making sure that we're planning long-term and we're setting the stage for future success drives us, right? And so, tonight, we've finished the work over, you know, multiple community meetings, a lot of focus groups, and sort of a year-long process from October to now to launch our next strategic plan. A little history about this. This is my third strategic plan here as Superintendent of Schools. It's the third five-year plan that the district is engaging in. We take that work very, very seriously. It is, it's the foundation of what we come back to in terms of budget priorities, how we fund our programs, how we make sure that our faculty and staff have what they need. And certainly, since S2, our faculty and staff, particularly our teachers, have been squeezed in a much more difficult way than they were prior to S2. Our class sizes are larger. We recognize that. I think that the district has done a phenomenal job of mitigating some of these negative impacts to the best of our ability so that we can continue to serve as a lighthouse district for the state, not just for the state, but national. This district has received a lot of national recognition, not just statewide recognition. We're a little bit of an anomaly. We're the largest high school regional in the state. We cover approximately 220 square miles. We serve eight different communities. Those are very different and distinct communities, and we're real proud of that, right? And I know that our regional model works. It works for an economy of scale. It works for providing opportunities for students, you know, whether that's through our co-in extracurricular, athletic programs, or magnet programs. Our regular education track, right? Kids get an exceptional education in the Freehold Regional High School District. And so, just a little, if you flip, yeah, so here, if you go back, Mike. Just a little bit, this was this year-long process of planning. One of the things that we've always done a bit differently here, we don't like to, you know, build a plan in a weekend, or do a two-day retreat, and come out with a five-day, you know, five-year plan. We like to be real deliberate, take our time, take in as much feedback and constructive criticism as possible, run as many focus groups as possible in terms of really, you know, test parameters with what we're thinking should be in the plan versus, you know, what actually ends up in there. And so, we kicked everything off in October this year, as I said. We've had two large community events, but between those two large community events, we had a significant number of small focus groups and feedback loops that continued to help us refine our plan, which brings us to today. So, just a little bit about the plan itself. You know, the first one, 2012 to 2017, we embed a lot of the things that we know we need to do and things that we want to do within our plan. So, for instance, in the very first plan, we built in a systems accreditation through middle states that credited the whole district for seven years. We'll be moving through that again in the next year or so. And we continue to sort of sharpen the saw on how we plan, and we've, you know, we've gotten this down to a science. The first year we did it, you know, it was really learning, you know, the best way to gather feedback. And then, the second plan, it was really about, we really embraced the power of focus groups. You know, so the second plan and the third plan, we've run for, you know, at least 30 or 40 different focus groups to build those plans, and particularly from our students, right? The students are the ones who are experiencing what we think is working. And so, hearing from them, both out in the buildings and for members of our executive student cabinet, have helped to inform us in our planning process. Our core areas remain the same. One of the things that this district has done very well over the years is we don't just hop from initiative to initiative. We know what we want to do well, we know what we need to do well, and that's where we funnel our resources, and that's where we funnel our time. And that has worked very well for student outcomes here in the district. And so, our four core areas remain whole child, equity and opportunity, student growth and learning, and community connections. What I will say is that the full plan with our commitments, our if-then statements, our mission, will be up on the website after tonight, once the Board formally adopts it. The Board members have been an integral part in this planning, serving on specific committees as well. We've had representation from a really diverse group of stakeholders. And so, I hope that the community at large will take a moment tomorrow when this is up on the website, hopefully, it'll be up by then, right, Rebecca? Once this is up on the website, to take a few minutes to go through, because an awful lot of planning went into it. You know, flattery is the, you know, imitation is the greatest flattery, right? And if you look from our first strategic plan on, we're also, we put everything out there. We put everything out for the whole public to see and to digest, whether that's our strategic plan, whether that's our curriculum, it does not matter. We put it on the website. We're transparent, we're clear about what we're doing. And lo and behold, if you look at our structure, you'll find an awful lot of other school districts that just happen to find the same structure after ours. So, to me, that's the best form of flattery. You know, you learn from stealing ideas from folks, but I also think it's really, it sets our district apart. We've been trailblazers in this work. We presented this plan just as recently as at the National Superintendent's Convention. Members of my team just presented there last month, as a matter of fact. So, we presented how we engage in this planning process at the state level, at the national level. We've been recognized for it, and I'm proud of the work. And I would just invite members of the community to take a deep dive onto it, onto the website tomorrow. It will be posted. The full document will be up there for individuals to review. And as always, I thank the Board members who've always supported this work, have always engaged in the work, and have given us, you know, both the latitude and the support needed to do it well. So, we'll have that up tomorrow. If anybody wants to take their seats, you can go back up unless you want to be blinded. I know, because I'm going to go into a couple other things. I do, I do want to take a moment. We have a couple guests here tonight. We have Assemblywoman Holmer and Assemblywoman Perno, with Chief of Staff Esposito here. Great advocates for the school district. We appreciate you. They've spent an inordinate amount of time, you know, checking out, checking in, listening, learning about the school district and our needs, and particularly fighting the good fight with S2. And I always appreciate your support and your willingness to engage and your time. So, thank you, thank you for showing up tonight and always supporting this district.
Thank you for coming.
And so, they've moved the audit timeline, so I'm going to call John Swisher up to the podium. John has been the Freehold Regional High School District's auditor. He's also a member of the community, has also had kids come through our system, and so knows the Freehold Regional District inside and out. And I will turn it over to you, Mr. Swisher.
Thank you for the introduction. It's true, my boarders both attended the Al High School, and really, really worked out very well for them, I would say it was pivotal for them to get into college. It really started them off on the right foot. But as to the audit, as Superintendent Sampson just said, we're late again. This is the report for the year ended June 30, 22. Statutorily, that is supposed to be filed with the Department of Education by the 5th of December. We are four years in a row late, and that is no fault of the district. We are required to get certain information from the New Jersey Division of Pensions that goes into your report, and those numbers were not available until late February. Then it turns out those numbers are wrong, and we amended them again. We got them in early March, and that's really kind of delayed the process. Even getting the hard copies of the report was delayed. Today is actually the due date, and I'm happy to say that the district just filed it on time, but it was a lot of effort to do that. I'm going to go over the results of the audit right now with you. So, again, you are required by law to have an audit done. Every school district in the state is required to have that done. And the key part of that is that I come in and render an opinion on your financial statements. That means I go into the business office and I get the records, and I take those records, I put them into a format, actually, I should correct myself. Here in Freehold Regional, you're special. You put the numbers into the Act for the Annual Confidence of Financial Report, the thick report you get. Most districts do not do that. I have to help them with that. You guys do it yourself. Then I take those numbers and I subject them to tests, account balances, transactions, et cetera. And the idea is, I'm going to subject them to those tests that I can say that they are free from material misstatement. And you're looking for me to render an opinion on those financial statements and say that they are free of material misstatement. You're looking for an unmodified opinion, which I'm happy to say, the district has again gotten. So, that's really the fighting match right there. You want me to render this opinion so that you, as the Board, can have faith in the numbers. The public can have faith in the numbers, the state, the federal government, et cetera. It's really critical to get that unmodified opinion, which you do have. The Act for, you know, the Annual Confidence of Financial Report, also has two other letters in it. One is an opinion, Government Auditing Standards, the GAS opinion. That talks about internal controls and compliance. Internal controls are the rules and regulations internally that the district has to make sure that all the transactions are properly recorded and to make sure that there is no fraud going on to detect fraud within a reasonable period of time. So, we go over these internal controls, and we make sure they're suitably designed to make sure that the financial statements are great material misstatement. And then, we test those controls to make sure they're actually functioning. And I'm happy to say, your internal controls are suitably designed, and they are functioning. None of our tests disclosed any kind of errors or problems that would be required to be filed, recorded in the report. The second part of that letter talks about compliance. Okay, we live in the state of New Jersey. We know there's a lot of compliance at the state level, also at the federal level, and locally as well. You have your own rules, as you just said. So, again, we're in testing stuff, in testing different compliance, whether it's on your purchasing, payroll, expenditures, et cetera. And if I had problems with that, in this letter, you would cite findings, okay? Happy to say that that letter is clear, both internal control and compliance findings. So, two letters down, we're in good shape. The last letter that's in the Act for regards to single audit. The single audit is when the district exceeds over $750,000 in expenditures in either federal or state programs. Once that happens, we have to go in and do additional testing. We have to look at the different programs that you have. You're all probably very familiar with ESER, okay? Federal government wants us to look at that. We looked at it last year, we looked at it again this year. But the other programs cycle through, IDEA, Title I, National School Lunch, extraordinary. And we're looking at all those large programs at least once every three years. And this year, I know that we did do ESER, we did National School Lunch on the federal side. And I'm happy again to say that your records are in order, and I have no compliance findings on those programs. Very important, I think, with ESER especially, a lot of money involved there. I can imagine federal government may come back and do their own audits in the future, and you'll be happy to know that your records are in good shape regarding them. So, that's the Act for, that's the big report with all the numbers in it. If there were findings, they would be revealed in the second report. There's a small report that you'll receive, the Auditor's Management Report. That report is required by the Department of Education, and in it, they ask us to report on certain areas of compliance. There are things about compliance. Again, purchasing, treasury report, Board Secretary's report, capital assets, et cetera, et cetera. And if there are any problems in that second letter, the compliance and internal control letter, they would be, that would tell you, we'll look at the Auditor's Management Report for findings and recommendations. I'm happy again to say that there are no findings or recommendations. And this is a number of years in a row that the district has had that. We've had some comments in the past, but they've been taken care of. I think we're on a pretty good streak now. So, but the results of the audit are telling you is that the financial data that's coming out of the business office is reliable, okay? That's really the key, and that's what you want. That's what I'm here doing the audit for. I will comment briefly on financial condition. I usually do that at the end of my report each time I come to see you. And the district is still in pretty good financial condition. However, there are signs. And the Superintendent touched on it earlier, with S2, with reduction in state aid. It's going to become harder and harder for the district to regenerate their surplus. Each year, you do a budget, and that budget consists of taxes, state aid, some miscellaneous revenue, but not a lot. And then, you use some of your own money, your surplus, to balance the budget. And it's critical each year that whatever surplus you use in the budget, you regenerate it so you can use it again next year, and that makes sense. Well, one of the key elements to that is the lapsing of your budget appropriations. When any district does a budget, their budget comes to zero at the end. There's money left over, and that money funnels back into the surplus. We use it to support the budget, and we move on. What you're seeing, not only here, but I have the pleasure of doing a couple of districts that are involved with S2, is the budget is getting tighter and tighter, okay? As a result, you're not lapsing as much money back into surplus, and therefore, it stands to reason you're not going to have as much surplus to use going forward. This is the cycle that this is causing by this reduction in state aid, okay? Your taxes and your state aid are literally probably 92, 93% of your total revenues. So, when you have one revenue that is going down, and another large source of revenue that is capped, basically at about 2% of your taxes, it's going to be very hard and challenging to keep using that surplus and regenerating it each year. That's really the key that I'm seeing here in my other district that I do with S2. Actually, I would say that across the Board, I'm seeing, our company does 38 school districts across the state, and over the last couple of weeks, I have these meetings. And generally speaking, even outside of the S2 districts, there's a lot of districts that are seeing this kind of tightening of their budget. And it's a tough cycle to be in. So, again, it's a challenge, but you gotta try and keep that, try and keep your revenues coming in. But that's basically it. I'll pause now, if there's any questions in the group, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there a percentage of what, of how much you should take on your, you say that's a little too much?
Yeah, no, listen, the size of the district would be involved as well. I've just always kind of, you know, advocated that you don't want to use any more than you're going to regenerate, which means that you have to be planning, right? You're not just looking at a year-to-year basis, you're looking at a three-to-five-year basis. And I know that Sean is always on that because it's down the road. Especially at the beginning of this five-year cycle, or within five, you're five with the seven-year cycle. I know the plan that's going into it. I've had long, long discussions with Sean on it. So, it's more necessarily not about an amount necessarily, but making sure that whatever you're going to use, you're going to regenerate it, okay? So, especially here we are now in March, we'll be heading towards the end of the year. You're doing calculations, where am I going to land at the end of June? It's starting to come into focus right now, probably pretty clearly. And as you're constructing your budget for '24, that guesswork as to where you're going to land is going to be critical in terms of what you're going to be able to use for surplus.
I should try to run my house like that.
We all should.
This is always a highlight, your visit, because Mr. Voits and Mrs. Smith, they do such a fantastic job. And so, we look forward to when you come, because we really know it's good years. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Bruno. You know, I pointed this out before, and John alluded to it earlier in his comments, but, you know, John and I have conversations throughout the course of the year, which is beyond the scope of the engagement of an audit. But with so many districts that he's involved with, he sees a lot of different scenarios, and that's good information. John's also involved at the state level on a number of committees. And I value his thinking, and we are, you know, regularly bouncing ideas off each other back and forth. And I think some firms see it as more or less, the audit as a commodity. You know, you drop in, you do the audit, you issue your report, and there you go. But it's a different kind of professional relationship and different level of service that John brings, and I certainly appreciate that. I also want to note, as I do each time this, the audit report is presented, that Trish Smith, the Administrator of Finance in the Business Office, really runs point on the whole audit process. And John had mentioned earlier that we're one of a few, if any other of your districts actually produce financial statements and present them for audit. That's a highly technical skill, and Mrs. Smith also is, you know, running point on the day-to-day operations of the district. An incredibly valuable person to work with, so I just wanted to acknowledge her as well. And I think, John, you would agree with that compared to some of your other districts.
I was told not to say anything nice about Trish, because she gets embarrassed. But it is, it's hard to really comprehend, so with your 38 districts, I can tell you, you are the only one. And that's not, that's not a knock on the other districts. It's a very specialized talent that Trish has. I have other districts that will give me some of the schedules. To put it into context, this year, in your audit, there's a new standard that I'm not going to bore you with details of, called GASB 87, it follows leases. And so, of each one of my reports, I have to go in now and change them for this new standard. Literally, I gave her a little bit of instruction, and she ran right through it. I reviewed her work, spot on. So, you don't see, Sean told us about our conversations during the year. I would argue that I get as much out of them as he gets out of them from me. You guys are, I always kind of refer to you as a flagship client, because I do get a lot of good ideas from you. It's a great relationship that we have. So, I value that, and I thank you for your very comments.
So, I appreciate your work, John, and really, my whole team in the business office does an excellent job, and I think that comes through this time each year, and I appreciate them as well. So, I just wanted to share that with the Board.
Okay, last thing before I go. You have these reports which you're going to go over, you just got them the other day. Should you go through them? Should you have any questions in the future, and you need to get a question to Sean to get to me? Or if you need me to come back to a meeting, I'd be happy to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue on. I don't have a question about GASB 87, John, that I can tell you. So, tonight is the time of the year that we adopt the tentative budget. And typically, the adoption of the tentative budget is a perfunctory exercise in Freehold Regional High School District, because we know that we have somewhere between five and six weeks to adopt that final budget, and that there may be, you know, elements of that that change. However, it is, it's important to place the adoption of the tentative budget in context this evening. And so, you know, as the district stands tonight, we are looking at a potential $6.7 million reduction. That's not, we were anticipating a $2.1 million reduction due to year six of the seven-year drawdown of Senate Bill Two. The School Funding Reform Act, the SFRA that governs school funding, in its very opening statement, states that it is designed to provide a predictable means of developing new budgets. When we look at the numbers that we anticipate and expect a $2.1 million reduction, and when that reduction is $6.7 million, and when we have about six weeks to figure out the delta of how we're going to manage that additional almost $5 million that cuts, that, there's nothing about that that is predictable. There's nothing about that that is consistent. And so, you know, I always like to give a little bit of a history lesson around these things. We have challenged the premise of S2 from the start. We believe that it's built on faulty data. We know that the reason, if we've engaged in a lawsuit with the state and the Department of Education largely to get more transparency over how these numbers are arrived at. And so, the multipliers that the state utilizes in order to determine what your local fair share is, what the state believes your community should be paying, Sean, correct me if I misstate anything, right? What the state, what the state believes your community should be paying, we have always wanted, sought greater transparency in how those numbers are arrived at. Leaving, this lawsuit has gone on for years. The equivalent of what occurs would be the same thing of me coming before you on April 27, and we adopt our final budget and say, our budget this year is $184 million, but I can't tell you how we got to that. So, deal with it. That, that's the equivalent of what we deal with, with the variability of the multipliers themselves. For instance, and I'll be testifying at the Senate Budget Committee hearing on the 21st, and one of the points I'm going to make, one of the points of emphasis that I'll make during my testimony is that if the multipliers were consistent, if we had the same multipliers we had last year, right? So, you would expect to be able to have this consistency, this predictability, so that you could budget appropriately. We would have been looking at somewhere around an $800,000-plus reduction. That number this year was $6.7 million. Our community's wealth, our overall community's wealth went down from last year. It decreased. The state's determination of our community's ability to pay taxes actually increased by over 10%. So, the equivalent of that might be, home values might have gone up, but I don't think that the gentleman who's sitting in, or lady who's sitting in a $400,000 home that's now valued at $440,000, but their income went down from last year is believing that they should be paying more taxes, right? So, the local fair share is something that... So the local fair share is, is something that we have, we have, we've really tried to wrap our, our arms around. We've challenged this. And we also said a couple of things over the seven-year drawdown. We said that, we, we asked, pleading, that no district be reduced by a number that's larger than what they can generate on the tax levy, in order for the district not to drop below the adequacy line. The adequacy line being what the state itself says you should be spending to educate the children in your system. So for the Freo Regional High School District, we are now $20 million below that number. So that we're spending $20 million less than what the state itself says we should spend to provide our children, which last I checked, they matter too, a thorough and efficient education. Those are the ramifications of S2. Part of the issue is the seven-year drawdown was arbitrary. Didn't match necessarily the, the timeline of which we got here. And it created a system of winners and losers. Now, to be fair, there was a system of winners and losers prior to that. The state's responsibility is to have every district at adequacy. That is their constitutional responsibility. And so when we're $20 million below adequacy, and our tax levy is about $2.8 million, let's say it's $3 million. We cannot get to adequacy until the year 2035. So we are under the very line that the state says is required to provide a thorough and efficient education for our children. Now, our per pupil spending is just over $14,000. The reason that's important is we're the lowest, we're now the lowest per pupil spending district in Monmouth County. We're a high school-only district, and we do realize efficiencies from being a regional. The regional model works. We believe in it, right? We're here. However, high schools themselves are much more expensive to run traditionally than middle schools and elementary schools, because you have the entire second half of the day. You have hundreds of athletic programs. You have the busing that comes along with that. You have magnet programs like we have that are moving students from, from different areas. So you would expect, on, on average, a, a high school spends about $3,000 more per pupil than a K-8, correct? Mr. Boyce, about $3,000? So think about that. We're the, we're the only high, we're the largest high school district in the state of the 50 or so districts in Monmouth County, including districts that have 1,000 kids, 100 kids, 500 kids, 5,000 kids. We spend less than every single one of them. That's not necessarily by choice. That's by being reduced, right? So we, we are hopeful. We know that there is an awful lot of conversation, consternation, and arguments that will, that will, will now occur between the governor's initial budget proposal and the final budget that, that is adopted. What we have argued and what we have asked over and over again is that in a time when the state is sitting on federal dollars and a surplus to the tune of billions, that no state should receive cuts post-pandemic. It's pretty simple. So that, that's, that, that's been the ask all along. To keep every district whole to the cuts they were going to receive, so not, not to necessarily keep every district whole, but to keep them from further cuts, right? Is, is, is a total of $157 million, give or take. It's a drop in the bucket to what, what's happening now. We were, as a district, the, the conversations we're having around our, our budget now really should have happened two years ago. But I've said this before, COVID, from a financial perspective, actually saved us from S2. Because we generated savings, and we had an influx of federal dollars that offset those S2 cuts. But throughout, we were still reduced. And I, and I do believe that New Jersey, if not the only, is one of the only states that has continued to cut the aid of districts during the pandemic. They continued with that pathway, regardless of where the district was. So Freo Regional, this, your, 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 your shore area looks like this. Brick Public Schools are $9 million under adequacy. Tom's River Public Schools are a staggering $60 million under adequacy. The Freo Regional High School District is $20 million under adequacy. So if S2 continues, and, 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 we're going to talk about the tenant, I'll talk about the tenant budget momentarily. But what people need to understand, and, and, again, I, I don't want to be like Chicken Little, because we would have been here already if COVID didn't occur. That was an anomaly, and here we are. Next year is the final drawdown of S2. So this isn't, last year left with cuts. We're to be cutting then next year. The cut next year looks like it could be close to $7 million. But what's happening, where people need to also understand, so we, let's say we have that $6.7 million cut. That's on top of $3 million in additional transportation costs. Transportation runs that went up an average of 28% this year. 28%. The bus companies made out in COVID, trust them. 28%. And so the hole that we're in is really a $10 million hole. It's not a $7 million hole. So there are a number of things that are on the table in the tentative budget. And again, I will say, I know that there's a lot of conversations taking place. I know that there's a chance that those aren't the final numbers. What we're hopeful for is that those, that work becomes evident prior to the adoption of our budget. Because the difficulty in all of this is that public school timelines do not align to the state timelines. Why that is, I have no idea. When we got off of the election with voting on budgets, they never changed it. It's a pretty simple fix to align the school budgeting calendar to the state budgeting calendar, but what do I know? So the, our, our timeline is much shorter than the state's timeline. You know, the state still has another four, four to six weeks after we're going to strike this final budget to, to come up with their final budget. And so that puts us in a difficult position. And what we're trying not to do in the district is cause undue angst and acrimony. But we are trying to educate our school community as a whole about what is happening with S2, what that looks like for certain communities, how that is disproportionately impacting certain districts, right? So they, when they, when, when the state says it's because you have declining enrollment, yeah, our enrollment went down 7%. Our state aid was cut 50 over. Our, our determination of our ability to pay went up over 10% just this year. It does not align to our, our, our reduction in, in students. It does not align. The numbers don't make sense. So the tentative budget has a number of things on the table, right? First and foremost is, is a fundamental shift in transportation. And, and that's the elimination of, of all, all what's known as courtesy busing. But courtesy busing isn't quite as, as, as easy as it sounds. Courtesy busing for high schools is 2.5 miles, period. That's in the budget. That's in the tentative budget. The, the, um, tax adjustment, the levy adjustment for increased healthcare costs, which is allowable under the 2% cap, is in the budget. The other things that are obviously being considered would be participation fees down the road, and then obviously, you know, staffing. This district, and, and I want to be clear on where we stand with staffing as a district, where we stand philosophically about how we approach this. First and foremost, we've eliminated 112 positions in this district since 2012. I have eliminated more than 15% of the administrative team since 2012. So double what the student population decrease was. We have done the vast majority of that through attrition, so as not to actually cost individuals jobs, but we've lost those positions. What that does is it constrains the organization and places a lot more work on everybody who's still within it, particularly our classroom instructors and our teachers, who now are dealing with a much higher student load. So whereas maybe a ninth-grade English teacher had 100 to 110 students in 2012, they're looking at 130 to 140 now. This all runs concurrent with the explosion of needs post-COVID. Because what, what we're also dealing with in just the past two years alone, and when I see the hub-and-spoke model of mental health, what a disgrace. So what we're dealing with just in this district alone, in, in less than two years, last year and this year, over 300 instances of students expressing harm to themselves or others. 300 plus we've managed. That's a mental health crisis. That's students continuing to struggle post-COVID. Since Parkland, since the Parkland shooting, because every time you turn on the TV, there's a school shooting, which is a, a whole other discussion. And I'm chairing the ASA Safety and Security Committee, that's going to deliver our final report in the next couple of weeks. We have added 12 additional security staff and armed officers in our six high schools. I'm not cutting those 12 individuals, right? Because safety first. So the budget just gets squeezed and squeezed and squeezed, and there's no recognition of some of these additional costs or these additional needs. If you think that some mob, some, some community placed two towns over is going to help the mental health needs of the students within our buildings instead of being based in our buildings, I got a bridge I'll sell you. It's a nice political soundbite. It is not going to be effective at all. We know that, that money would be better spent supporting the in-district programs that are meeting the needs of students. Through all of this, we have not been able to increase the number of counselors we have, because we're treading water with staff. So other districts who are both above adequacy and receiving additional aid are adding counselors, adding staff, while we're being squeezed and squeezed and squeezed. So a lot yet to occur between now and April 27th. But the community needs to realize what the long-term implications of this. And, and, and think about it this way. We can no longer manage as a district our long-term infrastructure needs. If we don't go out to referendum, it will not happen. So that's after doing a $20 million-plus energy savings improvement plan, where we bonded internally at no cost to the taxpayers, and upgraded our HVAC systems and our lighting, passed a, a $15 million referendum purely just for roofing and paving, nothing else. We have millions in priority-one infrastructure needs. We don't have the money for it any longer. We're not, we're not flush with the capital reserve. They're not there. So we're, districts are being put in a position, for instance, when the boiler at Marlboro High School went a couple of years ago, it was $850,000, right? These, these things happen. It was 60 years old, by the way, or 50 years old, the, the boiler at the board office, you know? So that went a couple of years ago. These are maintaining your infrastructure where you have 14,000 members of your community coming in and out of every single day. So these places are the largest public gathering every day, all day, all year, basically. We can't maintain our infrastructure long term. No one is talking yet about what happens in the last year of S2, what happens post-S2, what happens to school funding then. These are really important conversations, you know? I, we are fortunate, you know, Assemblywoman Oner and Assemblywoman Perno are here tonight. Our, our legislative leaders have been listening the past couple of weeks and spending an inordinate amount of time with Sean and I. But something has to change at the state level. Something has to change, or you are going to see districts go belly-up. That's, that's what will happen over the next couple of years. So we're hopeful. We're hopeful that we'll kick the can by gutting transportation, by jacking our taxes, by the way, there's no property tax relief in that, right? We're going to pay more for less as a community. And so these are things that I think the, the, you know, the general, the general public need to really educate themselves on, reach out about, because the real work is about moving forward, and how do we get off of what we know is a, 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 a funding formula that is not working in the way that it was designed? Getting off of a system that, instead of creating winners and losers in the state, tries to get all children to adequacy, not necessarily far above, not necessarily far below, but adequacy. It's hard to stomach when I see our state aid numbers, and I look at other comparable-sized districts, and they're receiving 20, 25, and $30 billion more than what they received last year? These are, these are things that are hard to take as, as, as a school system. So we're going to, we're going to ask the board to adopt the tentative budget tonight, knowing that there's a lot of uncertainty, knowing that that final budget might look very different. And, you know, there'll be a public presentation on August 27th of what that finality is, and we want to make sure we get it right. So we're going to, we're taking our time with it.
Sorry, you said August.
Ah, April, sorry. I wish it was August.
I'd love to imagine.
I'm headed to the beach, Martha. I don't know, yeah. So April 27th, the board members will have the, the, the board, the budget packets two weeks prior to, to review every item in there, and, yeah, make a, make an informed decision and ask all the questions that need to be answered. And we'll make the public presentation on April 27th, and, and we'll, we'll see where we land from, from tonight to then.
Thank you very much. If I could, if I could just add to that some. The reason that the district is losing state aid is because of the state's calculation of the local fair share. So we're losing state aid because taxes should be higher here. So at the current calculation, that's $30 million. The state's calculation is taxes, property taxes should be $30 million higher than they are. That's 20% more than they are. And because there's a separate law, independent of the SFRA, the funding formula, that limits the increase in property taxes to 2%, the district and districts like ours are not able to access that. And because of those two things, that is why we are tens of millions of dollars below adequacy. Adequacy as defined by the state, as this is the adequate amount of money that Freo Regional needs to provide a thorough and efficient education. So the, the, the funding formula itself, as supplemented by an external mechanism, capital property taxes, has forced districts into this position. And this is something that we have, we as a community have messaged to the state and through our legislators for the last five years. Because what we've done is we've preserved the opportunities, we've taken every effort to preserve those opportunities for our students through the first five years of the seven-year phase-in of S2. But that's not without some collateral damage. And as Dr. Sampson alluded to, it's damage in terms of not being able to put money aside responsibly so that we have somewhere to go to properly maintain our facilities. It is drawing down surplus in a measured but unsustainable way. That's going to bring this to a head. It's having more risk within our annual operating budgets, which is, means they're tighter budgets and less able to have the flexibility to handle the unforeseeable things that happen during the course of any school year. So it's not without damage along the way. What we decided to do, the choices we've made along the way, is to put the opportunities that our students have at the top of our priority list. Uh, but we're reaching the point now where we're no longer able to stave off significant changes to what Freehold Regional looks like. Uh, and those, those are the decisions that we'll be making, uh, over the course of the next six weeks in preparation for the final budget at the public hearing on April twenty seventh. And, uh, Dr. Sampson has been a vocal advocate for changes to state aid. Uh, and this community has been a vocal advocate, uh, and that's something that we're going to continue to do quite forcefully, um, in the, in the coming weeks and in the coming year.
Thank you. We have, um, John report tonight. Mrs. Higley from Freehold Township is going to talk about our finance committee that we had on Monday night.
At the finance committee, the audit was presented to us. As you heard, it was an excellent report. And again, I want to give kudos to Mr. Boyce, the business department, especially Tricia, for the great job that they did. We also, um, had a virtual meeting with the Buss consultants, um, anticipating a three to three point five million dollar savings by, um, which would address only a portion of our state cuts. But this would be aligned to the state mandated two and a half mile limit. Um, also, we spent much time talking about S two and the devastating impact it's had on our district. So that was our meeting.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Higley. Okay. Mr. Boyce, any changes to the agenda?
Uh, there are, uh, there should have been three, um, three additional sheets listed to the agenda up at table tonight. Um, two of those are addendum, um, to the preprinted agenda. And they are in the areas of G two, approval of retirements, G nine, approval of change of status, G fourteen, um, approval of six period teaching assignments. Uh, there's an additional, uh, item. It's, uh, J twenty under educational program, uh, programs, approval of a settlement agreement via resolve that Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education approves revised settlement agreement number twenty twenty-two dash seven zero zero one six on file, uh, in the Office of Special Services. And finally, uh, there was H five, the adoption of the tentative two thousand and three, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year budget. Uh, space holder was in the preprinted agenda, agenda, and here's the resolution that fits in there. So with those, uh, amendments, Mr. Bruno, that's the agenda being presented.
Thank you. Um, we have one person from the community who would like to speak tonight, Mr. Davis? From Analkin? Hi, Mr. Davis.
The tax.
Actually, I have, um, yeah, D C. I have a lot of questions. I could probably take up multiple hours every time, but, uh, your information here was tremendous. You answered a lot of what I came in here wondering about. But then you sort of stimulated a couple of other questions. Um, I'll limit it to just two. Um, you, you said that you, you don't have the transparency from the state around how these budget decisions are made. Is that an utter lack of transparency? Is there some level of transparency? Like, what, what do we know? Right? So specifically, what I'd like to understand is if they're cutting Freehold, you know, certainly I'd like the, the, the in the weeds detail. I'd like to be able to have that view. But how are they cutting Freehold relative to the rest of the state? Whether it's northern Jersey, southern Jersey, western, I really don't care. That data should be readily available. I never think there'd be a federal mandate for that. Right? So if you could sort of point in a direction, somehow, somebody, there's probably a governmental website to understand that. Um, and then the, the concept of fair share. It seems it was vague, maybe purposely, maybe we don't have your understanding. But when you talk about fair share, I think earlier it was mentioned talking about the, the increase in home values, the valuations of homes that took place particularly during a pandemic in this area. And, and, and I liken that to unrealized gains in the stock market. And there's been attempts bandied about over the years to try and tax people on their unrealized gains. And it gets realized for the following that it is, right? But is that the criteria for fair share? Or how are they measuring real income? Because it was said accurately that people's real income is dropping, particularly in this area. Right? So if you see someone's home price go up, but their net income is really down due to the CPI debt that's gone on under, um, political, but in Biden's administration, inflation is incredibly high. People's day to day life is a lot tighter financially, right? So I'd like to somehow have an understanding of how fair share is calculated. What's the criteria? Those are just the two things.
So we mentioned before the adequacy budget, right? So, uh, and, and I'll, I'll try and do this concisely. But there's a, there's a cost model, um, that's universally applied to all districts throughout the state of what it should cost to educate a kid, right? And so a high school kid is cost more than an elementary school kid and so on and so forth. That cost model is applied to the actual district's student demographics, right? So and the, by the product of that is the adequacy budget, which is a single number and is different for every district because no two districts have the same population, student population, right? So that's the first part of it to determine how much should it cost? And they call that the adequacy budget. The next step is how are we going to pay for it? Community pays first and the state makes up the difference, up to adequacy. The community pay first piece is called the local fair share. And how the local fair share is determined is there are two wealth indicators that they attribute to each district's ability to pay. One of them is equalized property value, which is different than the assessed value that you see on your property. And it approximates the market value, right? So the market value of the property and your district income from the most recent tax returns filed for, for that particular community. Those two numbers are converted into ability to pay by multipliers. Now those multipliers, that's where the mystery is because they change every year. And that was the, the purpose of the lawsuit to say, where are these multipliers coming from? So, uh, and, and Dr. Sampson gave this example. If the, now, if, if the property value goes up and the income goes up, uh, in any particular community, you can make the case that the ability to pay would go up along with that. The local fair share would go up. Um, but in, they don't always line up like that. And the example that, that Dr. Sampson gave was that the district's income year over year went down one point five percent. Yet the district's ability to pay based on that income went up over ten percent. Now that makes no sense at all.
So do you mean they presume that those are?
Right, based on the version of your, the district's income multiplier converted into ability to pay. So those multipliers, it's where are these multipliers coming from? Because that on its surface makes no sense at all. In fact, if the same multipliers from fiscal year twenty-three, the year that we're in the middle of now, were used in the calculation for fiscal year twenty-four, we would not be getting a six point seven million dollar cut. We would be getting about a five hundred thousand dollar cut. That's how much impact these changes have. And it's something that we've been after on how, how do you, how do you arrive at those numbers? Because the volatility of the district's ability to pay as represented in the local fair share is up, down, up, down, up, down. It is far from predictable and impossible to plan for. Um, and the further complicating the situation is, let's just say that, okay, if our local fair share went through the roof as it did this year, um, you could increase taxes. Well, that would be, you know, a thirty million dollar increase in property taxes. That's not going to happen even if we were permitted to do it. But we're not anyhow because there's a two percent cap on the increase in the tax level. So that means we can't access that portion of the share of adequacy budget. And the state moves on as if we could access it and they give us what the difference is. Those two together comes up far short of adequacy, which is why we're some twenty million dollars below the adequacy budget, which remember is the amount of money necessary to provide thorough and efficient education. And that is the fundamental flaw of the SFRA, um, is that there's, there's some adjuster, there's a mechanism in there to adjust things. Um, and then there's independent law that it was not contemplated in the design of the SFRA. I don't know if that was helpful, but.
Very helpful. Just so I can make sure I use the, well, the core words. If they're using, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they're using property value and things and stuff like this as, as a, as a direction for their fair share adjustment, right? Is that not organically flawed? Because when you go to different districts where maybe, you know, it's multifamily levels and the, the, the percentage of homeownership does not, you know, doesn't, not commensurate with, with, with this, right? Does it, would it not break down? And then by extension, is that then not an inequitable distribution of, of state funds?
So a, a, a couple of comments on that. Um, and you had, you had touched on it in your opening comments that, you know, property taxes and the, the increase in the value of your property representing, uh, an increase in your ability to pay property taxes has always been an issue, uh, beyond S two and beyond school funding. You know, the IRS doesn't do it that way. Uh, it's not until you sell your property that you have capital gains, you actually have the money to pay the tax. You don't, you don't do that if you didn't sell your house here or so. Uh, so that, that is, that is part of it. But the, I, I will say that the, these multipliers, it's the same multipliers used in all districts, right? But it depends on where you happen to stand in property value and income that has been impacting districts disproportionately if you're a property wealthy community or if you're an income wealthy community or vice, vice versa, on, on the downside of either of those. So the, the, the impact is amplified by the value of your property or the level of your income.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Do I have a motion to approve G one through G sixteen?
Motion, second.
Is that Elizabeth Caffey?
No, Jane.
Jane, thank you. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. I have a roll call.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Curici?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Next is Program Operations, Buildings, Transportation and the Fiscal Plan. I have a motion to take H one through I two.
Motion.
Mrs. Lavin and Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Curici?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Next, um, Educational Programs and Administration. Do I have a motion to take J one through K four?
Four.
I heard it's Capiello.
Capiello down there? Yes.
You have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Higley? Any discussion, board? No discussion? Do you have a roll call?
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except in, um, J six, I abstain from Michael Capiello.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except on J six, I abstain on Matthew Coulter.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Curici?
Yes, but I abstain on J twelve.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Okay, any board members have old business? Any old business? I just have, um, Monday night I went to the IB students from Freehold Township and how they had their, um, combined, uh, might be the first time they did it. It was a combined art show on the Delmo. It was excellent. And, uh, thank you for the invite. And yes.
Just, uh, Mandy Santos's retirement is on this agenda. And, uh, so for nineteen years, Mandy has been the assistant to the superintendent of Freehold Regional High School District. Obviously, twelve of those have been with me. Uh, she was the first person that I talked to when, uh, was approved for this job, uh, has, uh, taken the best of care of me for twelve years and, uh, really beside myself on what I'm going to do without her. Um, but I wish her the best. You know, Mandy has seven grandchildren and is just, uh, you know, heading off to a, a better phase of life. So, uh, regretfully, uh, her, her retirement is on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I've known Mandy for over twenty years. She takes care of everybody. So you go with her. Yeah, I'm joking. Okay. Uh, also, one other thing, um, I did go see Howe High School producer Matilda. Excellent, uh, a few weeks ago. I went to the senior citizens, um, dinner and show. It was great. And all big time. Yeah, that was put on by the Freehold Regional Teachers Association, uh, the, the dinner and that show. So I thank that. Any old business?
Uh, well, I just wanted to just echo that I did also go to Matilda and it was wonderful. Uh, Chuck, do you want to remind the public about the, um, college fair?
Oh, yeah. Oh, we're going to put that in new business.
Oh, okay.
If I can, Mr. Bruno, I also like to echo the comments on Matilda, uh, at Howe High School as, um, uh, Freehold High School's, uh, production, uh, which was also involved.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, they do.
The, the college fair is, uh, the twenty-ninth here at Freehold Township. Uh, we do, we do an annual college fair every year. Uh, one of the, uh, absolute best parts of having six high schools is that we're, we're significant draw for universities. Uh, we usually end up with about a hundred and eighty plus, uh, representation, uh, from, from higher ed. Uh, it's a wonderful evening, uh, for our juniors, uh, you know, and their, and their parents. And, um, it's, it's something that we're really proud of in terms of, um, the folks that we can, we can bring in to, to put in front of our, our, our students who are, who are looking to obviously attend post-secondary.
If you have a rising sophomore or junior, I would go to that college, that fair because it's excellent. And information's on the website. Okay, any more new business? Four members?
Yeah, Mr. Bruno, I want to say something else. Tomorrow's St. Patrick's Day, so I want to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day. But there's something else that I want to say. I want to thank our, uh, LD eleven Assemblywoman for coming out here tonight. And I, you know, as, you know, Chuck and Sean alluded to earlier about the whole S two thing. We've been talking about it, you know, the administration as a board for years and years. And, you know, it's got, it's, it's been repetitive, but it's evolved. And I know that some of the board members, I, I speak for myself and some of the board members here that, like, you know, Chuck and Sean did such a great job of articulating our district's position on it that I don't want anyone in the public to think that because the board members aren't being outspoken on it that, you know, somehow it's like we don't agree or it's complacency on our part. I mean, I, I, there's no reason for us to belabor the very individuals that we employ to speak and advocate for this district. So, you know, I just want the public to know, and I know certainly the administration that are here, you know, pretty much every board meeting, that when, you know, our superintendent and his team speak and advocate on these issues, that the board is behind them, you know, like this is a unanimous sentiment that we all share collectively. And, and they, they, they speak on behalf of, of all of us, including our board president. So I just want the community to know that.
Any other old new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion, second.
Meeting is adjourned.